There he is.
It's just I gotta do like different things because of the way the presentation set up so when I share my screen, you will actually be able to see the presentation. So. Let me. Share my screen. Hopefully you can see the presentation now.
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I am Don Hudson, your Assistant City Manager, and I'm here to give you an update on your sewer and storm water rates. Tonight's agenda, I'll discuss what happened during the fiscal year 21 budget process. I'll provide an update regarding Clean Water Services and their plans for their rate increases. What those impacts on the city sewer and storm water funds and then ask you for some direction on where we should go with sewer and storm water rates for the city of Tuolotin's local share. So if you'll remember, back in the budget process, we adopted water rate increases and the road maintenance, the road utility fee increases. But we held off on the sewer and storm water rate increases that were proposed at the time. What that would have added about a $3.50 per month to the average residential utility bill for the city's share and the clean water share of the bill. But we made a decision or you made the decision during the budget process and when we adopted those rates to hold off and wait to see what Clean Water Services was going to do in the fall. As I may not have mentioned already, that Clean Water decided to delay their rate increases that were to go into effect on July 1st and hold those until, looking at them again in the fall as a for a potential January 1st, 2021 rate increase. So pre pandemic for Clean Water Services, they were proposing a 4% increase in the sewer rate and a 12 cent per account storm water rate increase. They met last week in their board session. And their discussion, well, they had three options that were on the table. One was to do a rate increase on January 1st. One was to not do a rate increase on January 1st and then they would have a big spike in their rate on July 1st. And there are two options on that rate spike is either have one big rate spike on July 1st of 2021 and then go back down to the levels that they were proposing out to the rest of their future years. Or to take that rate spike on July 1st, spread it over three years and then kind of drop back down to their consistent rate. The board had a lot of discussions. Chair Harrington commented that they do provide a service and they can't forget that. Their rates like ours fund the cost of operations, maintenance and capital that manage and operate our systems. But they just couldn't get behind a rate increase effective January 1st. So they are directed staff to delay their increases until July 1st. And they've asked them to go back and look at how they would level off those future increases as much as possible without seeing huge spikes in any one year. December 1st, next week, they will be holding a public hearing to formally set their rates effective January 1st. The rate resolution in this spring just said that they would not raise rates until January 1st. So they're going to come back with a rate resolution after a public hearing to not do that rate increase on January 1st. And then staff that evening will present a plan for the July 1st rate increases. So what were our rates like? Well, we were proposing a 15% sewer rate increase, which was a dollar 50 per month on an average residential bill. This rate increase was part of the recently adopted sewer master plan. And so that was part of that. And then we were proposing a 32 cent storm water rate increase. We did adopt the budget with rate increases going into effect January 1st, 2021. So any of the revenues that we've adopted in the budget are with rate increases being proposed for January 1st. That's just how the budget was adopted. I'll be asking what your direction this evening. So kind of like Clean Water Services, we have three or two options. One is to implement rate increases effective on January 1st, either at those 15% pre pandemic proposed rates or another amount that you may choose to ask us to come forward with at our next meeting. The second option is we delay all rate increases until July 1st of 2021. The impact of that would be that we would be looking for a higher than original projected increase on July 1st. The master plan calls for a 9% sewer rate increase for about 90 cents per average residential account. And then the storm water rate of 32 cents. We would determine what those exact levels need to be during our 2122 budget process. I can tell you that we have looked at our funds and we would need to have a minimum of an 11% increase instead of 9% just to meet our 15% contingency that we have in place. That's a policy we have. And that would need to be probably for the next two years. Again, we would, our master plans call for a 9% rate increase now for the next three years and an 8% for the next two. Would be what we would be looking at before we would come back to you in the spring would be to look at a future projects and confirm the timing of them before we would put together that proposed rate that we would come back to you in the spring. So the direction I'm looking for from you this evening is if you want to go through with a rate increase effective January 1st and if not, what your thoughts are on a July 1st rate increase. At that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen so that I can look at you straight on and answer any questions you have.
Questions for Don? Counsel Kellogg?
Thanks, Don. So I know you mentioned this, but I just wanted to get a little bit more detail. So because of the sewer master plan, we've got certain capital projects, I'm assuming that are built into that. And that's why there's the increase in the rate. So are any of those capital projects that are built into that absolutely essential at this point in time? And what do we lose by saying, you know, we're going to push off the rate increase either January or July?
Well, we would, we would look at those projects. Some are, you know, probably within the next couple of years. I don't have the list in front of me that or more priorities than others. There are a number of them that are Basalt Creek related. So we would have to look at what importance and priorities for those projects to get the infrastructure down there would be. And of course, we would look at other potential funding options for the Basalt Creek infrastructure as well, one of which being urban renewal that will be discussed, whether or not that would cover any of these projects or not. I don't know at this time.
Okay. So just to paraphrase and correct me if I'm wrong, there's nothing that's absolutely urgent that we're going to miss out on if we push off to January or July?
Don speaking is for the public works. I do not believe there's anything that is that imperative.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Counsel Brooks?
Thank you for the presentation. I had another question kind of along, and I'm not sure who would answer this, kind of along the same idea of Counsel Kellogg, just if, you know, I know that I attended the National League of Cities Summit and I know that we're lobbying to help get support for cities through the federal. And I'm just curious if there's potential of us being able to consider this as one of the places that we could utilize investment if there did eventually end up being any hint of relief.
If Congress were to pass any additional CARES Act funding or emergency funding for states and locals, we would look at that. I don't have a lot of confidence right now that anything would be available to us that we could partake in. I think the infrastructure projects that are likely include would be including anything on a grander scale, but we would absolutely look at anything that would be available.
Thank you.
Counsel Morrison and then Counsel President Grimes.
Yeah, thank you, Don. I'm confused by the process that Clean Water Services seems to be going through. On your one slide, you talked about they directed staff to delay increases to July 1st and a leveling of future increases. And then right underneath it, you talked about December 1st, a public hearing to formally set rates effective July 1. And with the subset of staff to present plan for July 21st, can you clarify some of that for me? I'm just, I'm lost on what that process is. Are they, are they trying to set up a fee increase that won't take effect until July 1? Or are they? What exactly they're doing? Sorry.
Yes, sorry for any confusion on that. What, because when they passed their last rates, it just, they've set their rates until January 1st of 2021. So they have to come back with a resolution or any kind of a motion to set what the rates will be at January 1st. So that's what their public hearing will be next week is what is the, what are the rates going to be effective January 1? Now they're going to propose is any no change, but they actually have to go through that formal action.
All right. Thank you for clarifying. And then I guess I would, I'm kind of following along the lines of Counsel Kellogg's comments about making sure that that we're okay to be pausing and that it's not going to cause some problems. And then I think Counsel Brooks has a probably a really good point that if, in fact, and we should know probably by January, February. So if we can kind of hold out for a little while, I'm basically following that train of thought and pretty much agreeing with it, just FYI.
And I will double I, my recollection and I see Kelsey Lewis on here. She has a positive answer on, on any of those projects. She could weigh in on that. My recollection is there aren't any, but I will confirm that and get that out to everybody so that if there's any more different direction that we come out of tonight's meeting with, I would be available to do that on the December meeting.
President Grimes?
Thank you. Yeah, I think I concur with a lot of what's being said. The concern that I have though is if we put off an increase until July and Clean Water Services puts off an increase until July, then it would hit for everybody at the same time, at the time of year when water use starts to go way up. So their water bills are already going to be larger because you know, July and August, when everybody's watering and your bills are bigger anyway. And it just seems like, you know, not knowing what next year is going to look like, it feels like July would be for everybody, the big one, two punch. Is, I mean, is there a way that we could start in January, but maybe we start you know, at half of our proposed rate increase and then slowly work our way up as opposed to just holding off and doing nothing. And then everybody gets walloped in July with all the rate increases all at one time if we don't qualify for some CARES funding, which is a great idea. So like, could we have like a rolling rate increase for 2021, maybe seven and a half or 5% to start up and then reevaluate in August? And if things aren't too bad, we continue to ramp up our number.
We could do something like that at your direction. We could do it. We're not set at any particular percentage on January 1. If you wanted to do it for a different time or different rate, we could do that as well. We have that flexibility to do what you want and then look at how that would impact future rate increases.
Other questions? Counsel Pratt?
If we go back to, just if we delayed till July 1st, so if I understood right, it would take two years with a 2% increase to cover that timeframe we lost. Is that correct?
But just, I mean, we wouldn't fully do it in that timeframe, but just to meet our minimum 15% contingency requirements, we would be looking at 11% increase in 2122 as well as 2223. And that would then be both years, we would meet that 15% contingency requirement.
So I'm trying, I'm not doing math very well tonight, but so if we did what Counsel Grimes is suggesting, say maybe we did, I don't know, four and a half or 5% increase now, that would reduce that need. But I can't figure out how much without my calculator.
Yeah, without looking at the full picture, what that might look like, I can't say what that would change, what percent, yes, it would drop it lower than the 11% at what would it get it back down to the nine? I don't know for sure in front of me without running through those numbers, but yes, it would, it would drop it below the 11% that we would need in, in July.
Other question? I'm kind of with Nancy on this. That waiting, I mean, I know money is tight for a lot of people right now. But waiting a year also getting a greater increase than they would have now, or as she suggested, doing a small increase now. So we, you know, the increase later is a little bit less. It's kind of appealing to me myself. All we're really is deferring this money, the rate increase in my mind. And if we minimize it now, it'd be like Nancy saying, it's going to be a little bit less painful later on. And if we could just, you know, a small one, like whatever number we come up with, at least they'll ease the pain later on and decrease amount of time. We have to have that 11% increase. That's just my two cents. I'm on board with Nancy on that.
So if I may, Mayor, I think the idea of any increase now is troublesome just because we don't know where we're going. It seems right now this thing's getting worse than getting better. And I would suggest that, you know, reassessing it in January, at least preliminarily to see where things are, you know, if a vaccine's out and there's hope and you know, things are coming back, then, then, you know, that's a completely different consideration than we're still where we are today. So I would just suggest that, you know, by pushing it off to next year to give us a little bit more time to understand what circumstances we're facing would be in my mind, the best policy.
You're suggesting deferring the rate increase to July 1st?
Well, and deferring the decision at least till January 1st to, to reassess at that point in time to get some better clarity on what the projects are, what has to be done and what is more of, you know, luxury to have done. So then if, you know, there is a need for funds in January, then we have the justification for doing it. And if it's, you know, pushed off into June to do the rate increase, then there'll be an informed decision on that.
I can live with that also. They just had, they're just having us wait another month and a half and a lot can happen in a month and a half, as we all know with COVID. So. What other, what other folks think?
I agree with that. Um, sorry, Counsel Brooks. I agree with that as well. I think we can wait a little bit longer to see what this is going to look like in January. Not going on right now. I just with, you know, restaurants closing and businesses and I mean, this is going to impact them as well. It's going to impact everybody. So I would, I would rather wait and see what happens then. And if that's not something we're willing to do, then I like what Counsel Grant said regarding maybe in increments. So that way it doesn't seem like a huge bill that comes, not, it's not going to be huge. It's all relative, you know, we'll see it differently. But there's a lot going on right now with and things like jobs and people not knowing what's, I mean, we want to be, have them pay their bills and and keep them in their homes. So this will be helpful in a way as well. So I would, I would vote for waiting or support the waiting and or in increments.
Counsel Brooks?
Are there? I I, I don't have a hard deadline with January, but what I do agree with on this is that I would like to see what the information looks like. So I would like to see what it would look like as far as options with step downs. And I'd like to see what the community feedback is and and, and what kind of savings, even if we did an incremental one for those from January to, you know, my concern is things are going to be delayed as far as impact. And more people may be struggling in July and then having a harder bill to cope with, like Nancy was talking about, is concerning to me. However, I don't feel as though I have all the information from the choices that we have tonight to make a decision, certainly. And I also am hopeful that there is some consideration either from granting bodies or from government bodies around supporting cities who are dealing with challenges like this. And those are kinds of questions that I have as well as far as offsetting some of those concerns. So that's, yeah. And I think that update report from Clean Water Services, what the results are. I'm certainly not ready to do a rate increase tonight and in, and don't feel I have enough decision, but I don't necessarily feel like I would need a big wait to find out information to help me make that decision.
Nancy, you want to say something?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I had another point, but I lost my train of thought. I'm perfectly happy. I apologize. I'm perfectly happy to take a look at this in January. And then, as you mentioned, we might have a list of projects. Highly needed projects and then ones that can be put off a little bit so that we can figure out what a good taper in would look like for this. I just want to make sure that I mean, even with hard times and even with everything that's going on, you know, I just don't ever want to be in a position where, especially with Basalt Creek and everything coming online, I just don't want to ever be where we're like chasing funding for things that we need to implement for the city. I hate that as much as I hate raising fees and raising taxes on things or adding fees to things. I just don't ever want us to be chasing the money. But yeah, I'm happy to look at it in January and, and as Counsel Kellogg pointed out, who knows what the world's going to look like, you know? It, sun might be out. So I'm good with that.
Counsel Pratt?
I can unmute. Don, do you need, is there a timeframe when this, we need to get to a decision?
No, only if it was going to, if you were going to do something effective January 1, I would need to come back at your December meeting with that resolution. I can surely come back if that's the will of the council and work session in January with what I heard this evening. So I, that would be the only deadline I, deadline, so to speak, that I have would be if you wanted something effective January 1, I would have to be ready in three weeks.
Okay. Um, yeah, we're, we're in such extraordinary times with the pandemic, but I really, the January idea is fine with me because I, we've worked so hard as a city not to have these big spikes in our fees and increases. So I'd like to try, I mean, I really liked Nancy's idea. Definitely waiting till January sounds like a good plan to me. So we could maybe try to do some kind of talk about this then and off as best possible for.
So it sounds like to me that's pretty much the consensus, a majority, almost unanimous that we have you come back in January, Don.
Okay, I will work with staff.
Have some scenarios on a, a small increase over time, you know, a couple, throw a couple of scenarios at us.
Okay.
Based on the plans that are coming down the pipe.
Sounds good. I will get with staff too and work through that and have something at your January meeting.
Right. Terrific. Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
All right. So going on to the next agenda item, which is COVID-19 Community Grant Program update. And I'm assuming this is from Jonathan. Lewis was dressed on and everything there.
Yeah. I didn't want to iron tonight. So so Mayor, Members of Council, good evening. My name is Jonathan Taylor. I'm the Economic Development Manager. Last council meeting, you requested an update and we're here tonight as staff to provide an update on the current implementation of councils' community grant programs. I'm going to go ahead and start the presentation. And at any time, pop in and ask questions or we can wait till the end. So in September, City Council directed staff to implement two programs or at least two areas of focus. The Small Business Grants and Innovative Project, the Childcare Scholarships. These were funded directly as a result of the $680,000 that Tuolotin received from Washington County via the Federal CARES Act funding. Staff came back during, I think, three work sessions and two council meetings and laid out a plan based on council's priorities of helping small business owners as well as Tuolotin households who are struggling to provide childcare or maintain childcare. So before we get into the numbers, I wanted to provide a brief update for our marketing efforts in regards to these programs. As you'll notice, I've kind of broken down between the two, but pretty much they are the same across the board. The city emailed all of our registered business licenses up and over five email blast indicating a variety of business grants, starting from economic development, or excuse me, the economic stabilization round one, all the way up to our latest and current small business assistance. We partnered with the chamber. They provided numerous email blast, working with Don and the finance department. We included community flyers and all utility billing mailers that went out for the November utility bill. We conducted 50 business visits and I want to make sure that everyone knows that we did follow CDC guidelines, but we did visit those businesses and inform them both in the commons that we had some small business grants that are available for them to apply. Numerous social media posts and we also paid for print media marketing from Tuolotin Live to Pamplun Media. I want to call out two specific instances for our small business grants. We directly engaged with our local lending institutions, especially when we were trying to promote the Business Oregon programs because those lending institutions had direct knowledge of who and who did not get PPP or the other federal CARES Act funding for small businesses. And obviously the wonderful work that Kathy Bazan is doing at the Business Resource Center. In regards to the childcare scholarships, same, something similar that we did with small business grants, we directly contacted the childcare providers, chamber email blast or utility billing. I want to call attention to the two last bullet points. We have had direct engagement with our multifamily housing in Tuolotin as well as the recent, three weeks ago, Tiger Tuolotin School District Partnership. And so what they're doing for Tuolotin residents is they got federal CARES Act money from the county and for the Tuolotin residents, they're having them apply with us first. And then those that either do not or do qualify, they'll go through the school districts program. So as of today, from March 17th until November 23rd, the city of Tuolotin has deployed $836,000 to our local recovery efforts. We've spent 87% of the CARES Act, which is about $584,000 from $680,000 that we received from the county. Within the three programs that we had since March 17th up until today, we've deployed $808,000 for our small businesses. 252 in our economic stabilization round one, around 240 for our economic stabilization 2.0 and around 260 right now, as of this afternoon, for our small business rent assistance program. So, so far as of today, we've helped 102 businesses from March 17th. The average grant has been $700, $7,500. The smallest grant is 884 and our largest grant was 20,000. Of those 102 businesses, 31% are restaurants, 27% are our service sector industries such as nail salons, indoor recreation, cosmetologists, et cetera. 8% are retail, 2% are hotels and 14% are our elected health businesses, which include dentistry, physical therapy and those that were deemed essential during lockdowns. So while there's some, there's a lot of numbers on here and I'll let you kind of peruse those on your own. But one thing that I really want to call out to council is the impact that these grants have had. So the bold numbers that are indicated below the icons, 31% of the grant funding that went to restaurants are 31% of all registered restaurants. Thirty-one percent of the grant funding that went to restaurants are thirty-one percent of all registered restaurants in Tuolaton. So nearly. One, one four, excuse me, no, that's wrong math today. I've been doing a lot with math, but. Thirty-seven percent of all registered service sector and eighteen percent of all registered retail that we've been able to help. And as you can see, the average grants range from ten thousand dollars in our restaurants all the way down to sixty-six hundred for our retail. Thirty-four percent are minority owned businesses, which was a priority of council in March and has continued as such. As well as women owned businesses. They have also accounted for fifty-one percent of the grant recipients. Of the businesses that we've been able to help currently, there are four hundred and fifty people employed among those one hundred and two businesses. And the average age of our business that we've been able to help is twelve years old. So. A little bit beyond the average age of the one to five that need help, but these, some of these are notable Tuolaton restaurants and. Institutions that had been here clearly for quite some time. And then with the childcare scholarships, despite our best outreach efforts, council. I still, there's still a glimmer of hope. We've been able to help eleven children, but I am still surprised at the lack of interest. Or the lack of the availability of applications for this program. However, that being said. These eleven children have gotten an average scholarship of twenty-five hundred to attend four facilities in Tuolaton. Despite our best efforts, especially with our partnership with TTSD as well as direct communication with our. Childcare facilities, this is a number that it seemed to be kind of static across the timeframe that we're having the applications available. So our next steps is to disperse the remaining ninety-five thousand by December thirty-first. Thirty-first, twenty twenty as planned. I'll call to council. At our last presentation, we had about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars left in the. Remaining Cares Act Fund and due to the appropriate planning by both council and staff, we had dispersed as of the two week. Freeze, we dispersed about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to those affected businesses. So that drastically reduced our six eighty. But it was through appropriate planning that we were able to distribute those funds to those affected businesses, which we are still doing as of today. We're the only city right now that is in this position to help our local small businesses because of how we've kind of planned and. Distributed those funds since March. However, I do want to, you know, ask a couple of questions tonight if we have time. So it seems with the fifty-five million dollars that the state is about to distribute to the counties, it seems that. Our county will disperse those to the city and so we want to be prepared for that. If we do receive extra money and I can't put a a figure on what the amount is going to be as of yet, but they're going to use the same model. That Tuolaton and Forest Grove developed for the county to distribute those funds is if we receive that amount. Should we extend to the national chains? For example, that was a comment, a common discussion of me among several municipalities. Because we've pretty much hit our maximum small independent owned businesses. And so since the state. Derives its income from income tax, do we prioritize those as well? Should we extend childcare scholarships to Tuolaton workers? And then are there any other council priorities or considerations that you have moving forward? And we are up still up against a timeframe of December thirty-first, but if we do get that funding, what does council desire? What are some of the key priorities remaining for the rest of the year that you would like implemented? Are there any other things that staff could do to help promote and further council's priorities moving forward? And so I'll turn it over to Mayor Bubinett for any questions and discussions.
Questions for Jonathan. That's our Pratt.
So Jonathan, the people that already received this now, because we're just in a situation where we've. They can't have, you know, we can't go in restaurants and so the same people are being hit a second time. Are they unable to apply again?
So as of right now, Council Pratt, we have opened it up to all businesses that are currently affected by the two week freeze. The two week lockdown. So even though we've had some restaurants, they've received three grants from all three grounds because they qualified. Based on the priorities that we have set. So we're not precluding anyone at this time. However, we are prioritizing those. That are affected by the two week lockdown.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions? As for Kellag and Council President Grimes.
I just want to emphasize what what Jonathan just said there about the focus being on those businesses that are entirely shut down. I'm sure you've all heard anecdotes from local businesses and and the restaurants are just getting hammered. You know, the the lack of the takeout business is, you know. Compelling, you know, and and depending on the type of restaurant, you know, we talk about national chains, they're already built for the drive-throughs and everything else and I don't see. McDonald's suffering and pardon me if they are, but you know, my personal experience, every time I go through that drive-through for a happy meal for my kids. It's six cars deep. So, you know, I would, I would continue to focus on on the local businesses that are are affected. By the shutdown. And I'd also put, you know, a focus on thanking our staff. Jonathan, you mentioned it was difficult getting the. The childcare money out there. I'm still surprised by that, but I know it's not from any lack of effort on your part or anyone else that's working on this. You guys have done a tremendous job. I I see all the publications go out and for any business out there that's listening, please reach out. There there's gonna be some resources out there and we want you to survive. So, thanks.
Other question, that Council President Grimes, sorry.
Thank you. There was something that you said that I wanted to ask you about Jonathan. You made a mention of. Most, I think you said something effective, like most of the businesses out there, we've either helped once or we've had contact with them. If people, businesses qualified in the very, very beginning for rent assistance or something like that. They can qualify a second time, correct? Even if they're not in the current freeze window?
Correct, counselor. At this time, any business that has met the previous two criteria of twenty-five percent or less in revenue reduction. Or originally were affected by Governor Brown's executive order twenty twelve, they still qualify, but we prioritize the two week lockdown. Businesses as of right now. So it's kind of playing, it's trying not to play favorites with the businesses that were affected then versus the businesses that are affected now, but it's. It's leaving it open to those businesses who wish to apply.
Correct, and I think a long time ago when we first started this, I thought Council Kellogg said something that was, that really stuck with me. When we were talking about making the grants and limit the criteria for making the grants about trying to help businesses. That were trying to keep their employees on the payroll and not sending them on a furlough. Now, I'm not being critical of that because I know sometimes that's the only option given what's going on, but. You know, I like to think there's a lot of businesses out there that are still, they may not be a restaurant, but they might, they're a service industry and they're still trying to keep going. And keep their employees on. And then the second thing is something anecdotally that I was made aware of this weekend. On November nineteenth, there was a round of Oregon business. Funding Jonathan, if I'm not saying that right, you can correct me. Business Oregon funding that went out. And it was, it was a substantial amount of money, but it was a first come, first serve bidding process, which I found. Somewhat interesting and actually kind of disturbing. The application window started at three o'clock on the nineteenth and apparently by three seventeen PM. It was, it was closed and it has many applications as they could take. So, and that was a big business Oregon grant that went out. So, I mean, that's how much need there is. All across the board and, you know, if we can get another round up and going as quick as possible, I think that would be great. Because, you know, I love how our system is and I especially love that it's not first come, first served because that really didn't sit well with me. In the fairness spectrum, but.
So even though we have, oh, I'm sorry, councilwoman. I I wanted just to clarify, the ninety-five that we have left, council still has set aside two hundred and fifty-two future disbursements. So if we have a massive rush, I will come back to Cheryl and say that the need has clearly grown exponential. Compared to the funds that we have and then we'll be back before you, because I was trying to relate that to the business Oregon funding that. Massive amounts of need is still there for a limited amounts of money. So I just wanted to clarify, even though we still have ninety-five left to the federal cares act with the county. We still have to set aside of other monies as well.
Can I answer your question, Nancy? Okay, Council Brooks.
Hi, thank you very much, Jonathan. I am. Really proud of the work that we've done. I'm really impressed by, especially the women owned business statistics makes me. Very happy in this moment. And I'm glad that we're able to disperse eighty-seven percent and I want to talk a little bit about the childcare. Conversation. I understand around the area, there's also some help that's being done by our school district. And so some of the things I think about with the childcare conversation around extending it to workers here. That I like about that is that there are so many women and we've seen even in our own. Community here that are leaving the workforce to take care of their children. And we're at rates now of women staying home that we haven't seen since the nineteen eighties, which is, you know. Personally. Resonant to me because I was around for that, that era. So I hate to see us losing so much ground for women in the in the workforce. So that's something that I just want to put it out there and and I like that you came. To us with that idea. And then. The second thing with Council President Grimes discussing, I've had. Business owners also reaching out to me with that process and that it was delayed and and they had to call later in the day and. People with kids and, you know, there's just different people with different kinds of flexibility for being able to do sort of. Do you want to say cattle call kind of a thing like that? So my curiosity is around, are there identified businesses, especially smaller business entrepreneurial businesses? That are not getting captured by what we're doing that we know of and is there a way to reach towards that? And in some ways, I think about entrepreneurial innovative thinking. Are we talking also with those leaders around their ideas? If so, if there is a group of people that we're missing. With the qualifying conditions that were. Presenting to the the businesses that are applying for the funds. Thanks.
So to answer the first part of your question, Councilperson, is. The registered business is oftentimes different from the DBAs and we have access to registered businesses. And so sometimes our small independent restaurants that are minority or women owned or marginalized communities, they've registered it as their name. And they do business as the entity in which they're trying to do. And I can't differentiate, unfortunately, with our information. At both the state and the local level of, is that a business or is that a. Independent contractor, is that a restaurant or is that a some sort of service sector worker? And so there is that disconnect. And it's something that through, since March, we've talked about internally about capturing better data on our own without always having to rely. On the county or the state. Secondly. We of the business license list that we have, the ones that we see constantly. I'm working with Betsy, I'm working with Karina on translation services. It's, 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 it's an observation, so it's not rooted in fact, but it's just my experience in Tuolaton. Twenty twelve was very different for a lot of our marginalized communities in terms of business, in terms of our businesses. And so every time a person from the government came knocking, I got a lot of hesitation, whether that be founded in. Their own fear or in reality of what the situation was presenting to them. And so it was a hard hurdle to pass for a lot of ours, especially for. Minority owned businesses in the Commons. When I went around one day handing out flyers, it was a, it was a. It was a very brief, but yet cautious interaction. And so there's that, there's the disconnect between what a DBA and an owner is and then just in general, sometimes businesses don't want to get involved. With the government of any sort. And so. We do have a hard, a larger hurdle, but we are doing, I think, what we can, but it's also kind of what every other community in Washington County. Kind of facing with our marginalized communities as well as just, it's all about developing trust and open and honest communication, which I think we've done. From Tuolaton twenty forty all the way up until now from our parks and recs. So it's just, it's a, it's a. An aggregate effort that still is providing benefit.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Council Reyes.
Thank you, Jonathan. I really love great stats and new information. It's always. It shocks me. I mean, it's shocking to know that, that especially the childcare. Stat, that's, that's really, I'm still shocked, maybe because people just want to, they feel like maybe I don't need it or I don't know, who knows what people are thinking. Can you elaborate a little bit on the, on your idea or your question about. Extending to workers? I I'd like to hear a little bit more about that idea. I know you briefly said it, but I. Can, can you clarify a little bit? I'm trying to understand it a little bit more. Thank you.
Absolutely. So the idea came from a discussion that council had when we were originally talking about the childcare scholarships. So who do we prioritize first? And we as a community prioritized our residents and then. For two and a half months, we've left it open to our residents, but I I'm getting now to Tuolaton workers who attend childcare facilities. Here in Tuolaton that are registered ECC, but they also work in Tuolaton. And so in, and to your point, council. Member Brooks, they are women and they are, I can't elaborate too much because this is. These are confidential applications compared to our businesses, but they are single parent households. They are multiple generational households. And so it's, that's what we're getting now is those workers that are coming in, Councilmember Reyes. And i- is it a priority of council since a large portion of our Tuolaton revenue comes from our businesses? Is it an added benefit to help from, you know, promote and protect those interests as well through the workers? And so it's just an idea. We can still go either way, but. The thought was if we help not only residents and workers, we're connecting those two together of that working class promotion. Of making sure that those individuals have childcare, at least have access to those same resources.
Yeah, thank you. I'm wondering if, and maybe if I I I've brought this up before or just I'm wondering if. If what they need, a lot of these families. A lot of them might not have a choice other than have their children at home and working. I'm wondering if they need it's, it's like a relief for food and, you know, for like maybe diapers. Or things that are more that a more necess, like a necessity, more like immediate needs. So I'm wondering if that's versus having someone care for their children. So I'm just, I'm just wondering what. If I were a single mom and I had a couple of kids and what would I need? I probably can't handle them at home. But then my, I know my food bill will go up, my water bill will go up and electricity will go up. So I would probably need that support versus taking my kids to a place where they're taken care of. While work, especially the work that a lot of our families are doing. So I'm just, I'm just thinking about that because. I have sisters, five sisters and they all have children, so I hear their, their stories and so I'm wondering if they're. More families experiencing that kind of needing more of that support of buying food and. I don't know, all kinds of other stuff that kids need, formula, I mean, just, just. While they, they, they can probably manage caring for the kid, but it's that extra necessity that they need that might. Might help them out and I don't know how to help that. I don't know, I don't even, I wouldn't even know. And I don't know how to help that. I don't know. I don't even, I wouldn't even know how to start, how to like provide that for them. Just, just a thought.
Didn't we discuss this before and the county said we couldn't use the money for that?
Oh, got it.
When we talked about a general assistance fund and the county said we couldn't do that, that funds come from community action. They had a separate program that the county was running through community action. Council Brooks, now you, I want to, does that answer your question, Maria?
I, I do recall now that you mentioned it, but I just, I guess that's where the need is. And we're just assessing more of a business and all that. But I, I guess that's where, yeah, I guess that's where the need is for a lot of these families that have three, two to three kids at home. And maybe they need more assistance for their, you know, daily needs versus childcare or other stuff. So I'm, I'm just, just talking out loud. But thank you. I do recall that.
Because I brought it up with the county chair and that they specifically pointed out, there's a whole program set aside for general needs and food and stuff like that.
And I do recall that now that you mentioned it. So thank you.
No, no problem. Council Brooks.
I just want to follow up to the other piece around that conversation. Jonathan, are the people, the, you know, I'm imagining there are single moms that are working in Tuolton that can't stay home, that have to work. I mean, we have frontline workers. Where'd you go? My screen just switched around. There you are. They have frontline, we have frontline workers. So in my mind, there's people that work, I imagine, like their settings. We also have places that do kind of factory and distribution that can't be done from home. So are these the types of worker jobs that we're talking about where they're not able to actually supervise kids at home? Or they're actually, you know, in sort of a latchkey situation? Or using money for childcare that they could be using for diapers and formula?
If I, if I, can I re, can I just recap your question to me to make sure I got it correct, Councilmember Brooks? So are you saying, can they use childcare scholarships for themselves directly for whatever needs assistance they may have?
No, no, no. My question is more like, you know, speaking to Council Reyes's point around where we're prioritizing dollars. If I was a single mom working in Tuolton, in the business types that we're talking about, some of the rules that the workers do are not rules that people can do from home. So I'm just curious about the, you know, sort of the job types of, that people, that women or that people that are coming in for workers, that are coming in for childcare grants or requesting information about that are discussing. Because a lot of us, you know, for myself, a lot of work that I do is remote work and it works out really great. And if I had kids, I could do some kinds of supervising and some things like that. And it looks like it might not be as dire of a need, but other people have to go to certain places. And I'm imagining we have businesses here in the community where workers have to be there, whether it's grocery stores, whether it's, you know, that, that's the kind of question I'm talking about. It's more like business type questions, job type questions and necessity. And then secondly, if they're not home with kids, they can't afford childcare. Or if they're paying out of pocket for childcare and can't afford food, if they could get assistance, they may be able to pay for some of these basic needs that Council Reyes is really concerned about.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying, Councilmember Brooks. So when we discussed childcare the first time, you prioritized essential workers and we provided a list of those individuals. So absolutely, we, we've been doing that since day one. And anybody that works onsite that is required to work onsite is prioritized. In addition to needs-based assistance, we've also prioritized that as well, based on our prior council members' discussion as well. To the at-home work question, they only had to fall into two categories. A decrease in income, it doesn't matter the amount, and also an increase in childcare cost. So if an individual at home is reduced to work at home and they're not getting as many hours as they were being in office or onsite and they've experienced a reduction, they qualify. As well as, based on a prior city council meeting, we prioritized increase in childcare cost. And we don't ask the reasons why those increases happen. They just have to document. So if an, an at-home parent or guardianship needed that time away or they just needed some recoup and get their children or their guardianship socialized interaction at a registered ECC, we don't, we don't ask the questions. It's, so we've, we've met every one of those questions, to those answers, Councilmember Brooks. It's, that's just, we're still where we are with those eleven children.
Right. And, but I'm not, I'm discussing it from the point of opening it up to non-residents.
Oh, okay. If we did, if we did do that, we would maintain the entire program just at that bullet point.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Jonathan, thank you, not only for a great presentation, but just for an outstanding job that you've been doing. I've gotten a couple of comments, in particular from somebody who lives in Clackamas County and has a business in Westland, who said, you know, why can't Westland, Clackamas County be like Tuolton? And I've heard that from multiple people. I just want to, two quick comments here with respect to Council President Grimes' comment. I was aware that Oregon business money ran out. I was told six minutes. Somebody here in Tuolton tried to apply, got locked out, tried to apply again, and then it was, it was, it was closed. And I would strongly agree with what Nancy said regarding first come, first served. I just don't see the equity in that and fairness in that. I don't understand how on earth that could be a plausible way to award that money. So when that comes up in your conversation, you know, it would be appreciative if you could tell them they're going to do it again. There are better ways to do it, to be able to help everybody. And part of that is first come, first served. We just, you know, the council got an email from a lady two weeks ago that I ended up actually talking to, and they have a business here in Tuolton. She's not a Tuolton resident, but the business in Tuolton. And they were completely unaware. And even she admitted she should have known. And that as we walked her through what the Chamber of Commerce is doing and who her contact points are, it was like, I, I should have known that. She did not. And so I can't fault businesses. They are in their own little world, suffering their own human tragedies, really. And so the more outreach, and I, I'm not, I don't know how you possibly do more outreach, outreach, Jonathan, but I understand there are some, some businesses that still are unaware. So to that extent, you know, keep up that good work. With respect to the childcare support, I would be in favor of some of the things that you are proposing, Jonathan. The reason is, it's really simple. It's, it's what has already been said, that it's mostly, for a large part, you have single working moms. There was just an article in the Wall Street Journal that the number of working females has dropped below, I mean, they, it was getting to an all-time high and we're now back into, and I forget the numbers, but it's from multiple years ago of the number. Because it's the, well, we saw that in our own city, to be quite honest with you, with, with, with Aquila, with her making that decision to stay home. And so to the extent that we can support a Tuolton business, if it happens to be from residents who aren't in Tuolton, I don't necessarily see an issue with that, in particular if we are helping those that are clearly disadvantaged. And as, as Councilbrooks said, they're, you know, we have this huge Amazon facility now and they're not going to let you bring a kid in there. I can guarantee you that right now. And so to the extent that we can help, and the childcare facilities, from what I understand, I was at a meeting with the school district that involves some school personnel, and they're telling me they all have open slots, that they're, they're going unfilled as opposed to, you know, two years ago, there was a waiting list to get into these places. And so to the extent that we can help a family get that kind of care, I, I would be all in favor of, and especially in light of the fact that we still have some funds that have not yet been applied for. Understanding though, that some, one of the reasons they haven't been applied for is in large part because there are still some businesses who are unaware of the, of the policy. So thank you for all you're doing, Jonathan. Appreciate it.
Okay, because we're getting run behind. Councilor Reyes, because we have to make a decision here, too.
Okay, so I tell you, I was just thinking about what are these, because we keep hearing people that work from home and a lot of the people that are in need may not work from home. They're essential workers that work in manufacturing. They have to go to work. And I'll tell you who's caring for those kids. It is their siblings. It is their older siblings because, especially in the culture that I grew up in, you are in charge of caring for your, especially if your older sister, like the oldest or second oldest like me, you are caring for your siblings because your mom, who's single, a single mom, needs to go to work and prepare food. So I tell you, that's where, so they in their minds are not thinking, oh, well, I need a care, I'm going to take my kids to all these care location or where they care for them, because the siblings are caring for them. And what's happening there is that when we take the role as a mom or as a caretaker at home, it hurts a lot, the, 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 the older siblings, because they're not learning, they're having to take care of the kids. So that's what I'm thinking, that's what I was thinking about the helping out at home because, or something like that. And I know that can, that can happen. So I'm all in favor of helping the workers that are essential workers because they can't work from home. If I can work from home, someone who can work from home either works in an office, is a secretary or has some kind of computer skills. A lot of our families that really, really need it are not working from home. They're working out in the fields, they're working out in the manufacturing companies. So that's where, I think that's where the disconnect is and we're, and we're thinking that's, I feel like that's where the disconnect is. And I, and I can see it now that I'm hearing more people who are working from home, moms that are working from home. Those that can work from home probably have computer skills. They have some kind of knowledge of what's going on in the world. So I feel that that's where, that's what, I don't know how to fix it, but if we can help those families and we can all brainstorm and how we can do it, and that will be wonderful because I feel that that's where the need is. So I'm in favor of supporting the workers that come to Tuolton and have kids.
All right. So in an effort to move it along, so you got, answer is yes for should we extend childcare scholarships to Tuolton workers? I've heard pretty much everyone say that that's a yes. My questions are real quick. On the ninety-five thousand that's left, Jonathan, that's ninety-five thousand of like, for lack of a better term, no strings attached. It's not like the Business Oregon money. This is applied to the city. You meet the requirements, you get the money, correct? You're muted, Jonathan.
Of the six eighty, yes, sir.
Okay. So the restaurants that we all know that are closed in town right now, do you anticipate them, are they aware they can come back for another award? Because I'm, I can picture four or five in my mind that could easily use up the ninety-five thousand dollars. If they were aware of it and reached out to and told, get the applications in now because the money has to be dispersed.
Correct.
Okay. I know you're super busy. Have you had a chance to reach out to those folks impacted by the freeze yet?
Yes, sir.
Do you anticipate applications coming in?
We awarded, I think, eighty-five thousand dollars yesterday.
Okay. That's eighty-five, but that's not the ninety-five thousand that's on your slide.
No, that's, as of this presentation, that's how much we have left of the six eighty.
So we still have ninety-five, you did eighty-five thousand yesterday. We still have ninety-five.
Correct.
Right. So if we, like Council Morrison was saying, if, I have the feeling, if we could get the word out, I know you're doing it, I'm doing it on Facebook, I know that the Tuolton Chamber of Commerce is beating the band to get it out, the BRC is out there. I mean, everybody, just, and in all your social networks, get the word out, businesses have a chance for this money. But just like you did, I heard a lot about the Business Oregon window closing in seventeen minutes. It was a hot topic in the League Oregon Cities Call. So the need is out there and to apply, there were so many rules for League Oregon Cities, I'm sorry, for the Business Oregon grant that a lot of folks didn't realize they couldn't qualify till the last second. And he went through the whole application process. So this is a lot easier. So I say in the remaining weeks of this year, we just, you know, get the word out that this money is here. If you had it before, you can come back again. It's not an onerous process. Have you ever heard back from a business that said the, the process was overwhelming, Jonathan?
Yes, sir. In the two point O, because we did both the Business Oregon, we made this one so much simpler. So that's why we took that feedback to heart.
Right. Okay. As Councilor Kellogg said, at this point, I want to help local mom and pops versus national chains. I don't know how other people feel about that. I know a lot of local restaurant owners and store owners who are hurting, who I think could use the ninety-five thousand dollars less rather than a chain owner. I don't know how the people feel, but I think that is still valid in my mind. Council Morrison.
Yeah, real, real quick to that comment, Frank. The Wall Street Journal had, or it might have been CNBC, I can't remember now, too much news. McDonald's in the third quarter said that almost, I forget the percent, it was a very high, like over ninety percent of their facilities had higher third quarter revenues this year than they did last year. So to that point, the national chain is doing really well. And I saw your email about In-N-Out. We know how well they're doing. I had already, I had already read it. It was on the second page of the New York Post over the weekend. So it is, those, some of those, those are doing really well. And I think we need to really help. You gotta help the, the smaller ones. And they're the ones who don't have, the, the reason they don't know about it is they're working all day long. They don't have someone whose job it is to just Google surf for grants. So I, I would agree with you one hundred percent.
Just get it all on our social media. I know, like I said, people are trying, I mean, this is free money, fill out one-page, two-page application. And if you hit all the check marks, you get the, the funds and it's fairly quick to get the funds. Council President Grimes, because then we have to get going.
I'll try to be quick. Jonathan, to the, to the grants, if you're self-employed and basically one person, you're in your own business, or if you're a contract worker, do you, are you eligible for these?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. And I am in favor of making the childcare scholarships available to Tuolton workers. So I'll just throw that in.
So you have what you need, Jonathan?
Yes, sir.
And if you need any help getting the word out, let, let any of us know. Like I said, beyond the city's normal networks, we all have our own loan networks to get this word out. That, because if, it's usually lose the money, people. If we don't use it, it goes back to the feds to do what the feds do with money. We know that's usually not a great deal. So let's have, let's keep the money in our community. All right. We've got to get moving, Bridget.
Can I just say one last thing? That if it didn't work and we have money left, that I would be open to bigger, bigger companies that, especially in the retail sector, not the restaurant, but retail's suffering. So I just want to throw that out there in case we have gaps at the end.
Right.
Well, thank you, Jonathan.
I'm not going anywhere, Mayor.
Next up is urban renewal discussion.
So tonight, Council, I will be presenting just a brief overview of what we have discussed regarding urban renewal since about last, this, no, excuse me, April of two thousand and nineteen. So the presentation before you tonight is just the kickoff of the three timelines for Leventon District One, which is the Salt Creek area and District Two, which is our northern area. The questions for Council tonight, are the following timelines congruent with your policies? And is the proposal something regarding the Stakeholder Task Force for District One, something you approve of that you would like staff to look into? So real quick, not spending too much time on it, but we have taken a very slow and methodical approach based on your priorities, Council, from the foundation phase, which was in two thousand and eight, the Tuolton twenty forty project. Twenty nineteen, we did our education series and we officially closed the Central Urban and Old District. This year is Phase Three. We did our urban and old feasibility studies. And now we're looking into twenty twenty-one. What does that look like? And that's our Leventon District One Plan Adoption, and then the visioning for the District Two. And then obviously, twenty twenty-two is future work that will be derived from next year's efforts. And real quick, this is what our maps look like currently. So Leventon District One and District Two. Leventon is an existing boundary that is already established, so there will not be any modifications to that. It's just a, it's a non-tax, excuse me, it's a non-active collection area, but we do have funding left over, and we have been working on that since last year. District One is this area between the Southwest Industrial Concept Area and Basalt Creek and District Two, our northern area. So here's our proposed overall timeline. Today, we're having our council kickoff, which is delineating the timeline. And then immediately beginning next week after the Thanksgiving holiday, we'll start on Leventon. We've been already working on identifying projects, doing a few sporadic outreach efforts to our area businesses. But we're going to make this a little bit more of an official approach now, now that we have identified those projects, working with our consultant Elaine Howard, and then outreach with, to our area businesses, the actual identified plans that we intend to amend the document for. And then starting around February, District One will kickoff with the culmination in September of the plan adoption. And then District Two is going to be a multi-month process beginning in March with some council and community visioning. So our community engagement efforts look like this. Council, you requested what we intend to do in this regard at our last Urban and Noel engagement effort. Leventon's just Staff Advisory Committee in the area outreach. And like I've said before, we're, we're doing that currently, but it'll be in the more official capacity once we have those projects firmly identified and ready for adoption. District One, another Staff Advisory Committee, Stakeholder Meetings, Planning Commission. We must outreach with our overlapping taxing districts, and then we'll have a community forum. And then District Two, it'll begin with council visioning and community visioning. And then our public engagement will be to be determined based on those two items, which will begin next year. Real quick, this is our Leventon Tax Increment Plan Amendment. So it's different from a plan adoption. We already have a plan, we're just amending it to spend the remaining three point five, three point seven million dollars. So the goal is to amend the document to expend the remaining funds. And already identified is future URA district planning, which is what we're doing now with the feasibility studies in Districts One and Two. And really, it's just a four-month period with a plan adoption in March of twenty twenty-one. I do want to point out to Council, we don't have to have a fully funded three point seven million dollars worth of projects that we have to adopt in March. So if we only have two or three projects that amount to a certain amount, this process is to help you and staff learn the process for plan amendments. So after March, if we need to add minor amendments again, we'll know exactly what to do and how to do it. So there is no firm definitive way that we need to total three point seven million dollars. It's, it's just to help us get through the process with the new ORS revised statutes process for amending the plan. District One, the goal is to develop an urban rule to finance and implement identified projects from already area development plans. So Basalt Creek, the Industrial Concept Plan, the TSP, Twalton Moving, a Twalton twenty forty and Moving Forward. Twalton Moving Forward, I forgot the Twalton in that. As you can see with the timeline, we'll have multiple stakeholder meetings, community forum. It'll go before Planning Commission and the public hearing and Plan Adoption. The reason we have a set September twenty twenty-one Plan Adoption, it's where we can collect the development that's occurring in two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, which will help further city councils plan in Basalt Creek area, whether that be a housing, area development, infrastructure, et cetera. And part of that process, and this is just a proposal, Council, is to have a stakeholder, stakeholder task force in lieu of the URA, which is the Urban and Noel Advisory Committee. The URA hasn't been involved in any major discussion or active since two thousand and ten. So this is to clear up some municipal code and replace it with a Twalton Development Resolution. It's not required by state statute, but it is a best practice. And so the purpose of this task force is to advise the Twalton Development Commission on this area's plan development. Now, after these two areas are implemented, Council may want down the road to reactivate URA. But staff feels that at this time, this might be the best way forward, getting the Zoom component of public meetings. So the proposed structure is, and this is kind of directly tied to the URA's former structure, up to seven members, and then property owners, taxing districts, a Planning Commission and the City Council person. Term and resolution would expire at the end of the plan adoption, which would be September twenty twenty-one. And then the duties as prescribed by best practice is to review the plan boundary and make recommendations, recommend and identify projects in the proposed area, and then review the financial analysis. And so this is just enhancing that community and stakeholder buyback. District Two is much more of a broad and collaborative effort that we'll undertake based on Council's priorities. And so this area includes the Town Center, the I-5 Corridor and Twalton Sherwood Road, and the map is on your right-hand side. But the questions that Council will not need to answer tonight, but during their visioning processes, we have to understand what the area is now. What vision does Council have for the area? And how can we implement that? And so we kick off tonight, and then Council Visioning will occur beginning next year. We've lined up both Elaine and Nick to do some of those visioning, but I know that city management is going to also do visioning at the Council Advance. And so it'll be an ongoing process that doesn't really have a hard end point or starting point. And then next year will be just visioning. What is the area? What do you want the area to be? And then how can we implement that vision? And so just to recap, are the following timelines congruent with Council priorities? If yes, staff will begin immediately on these projects. And then if Council agrees with the Stakeholder Task Force, we'll bring back that resolution and repeal of TMC eleven on December thirteenth, because it'll be, I think, since it's a repeal, a two-meeting effort. And then our next steps, if we do move forward, are sixty-day milestones. Because as Council, Council Kellogg stated, it's unknown what the next few months is. So we're taking step by steps of sixty days. So we'll have a URA one oh one for our internal staff advisory team, and then we'll finalize the projects for Leventon. And then District One is, we'll come back with a task force resolution, and then whatever components that that task force has, we'll immediately begin solicitations for those spots for the Stakeholder Task Force.
Questions for Jonathan? Council Pratt.
I don't really have a question. I just wanted to just say I agree with both your questions, that the timelines look good and you've done a great job, and that I really think it's imperative that we have a Stakeholder Task Force.
Other questions or comments? Okay, just a quick question for me then. So on the Stakeholder Task Force, you have one tax district representative. Remind me who could be the possible tax district, taxors impacted in Basalt Creek? Obviously, well, it's not TTSD down there, that would be Sherwood School District, I'm assuming, and then TVF and R. Who else is there out there, Jonathan?
Washington County. And Elaine has walked us through internally, and we'll, we'll put this in our future staff reports. But it's, we have to have approval of the four major, four major ones. So, and those are the four major ones in that area.
So that, that goes to my question. So that one tax district rep is supposed to speak semi behalf on the other, of the other three, or your, the assumption is you're talking to the other three? How do you assume that's gonna work?
So Council can appoint all three if, if that is the desire of those taxing districts. But usually, according to Elaine and best practice, it's just the one that you need to convince the most.
Okay, nicely put.
It was an odd way to say it, but it's, it's reality. It's the one who would provide the honest feedback to your plan.
Okay, thank you. That, that makes, that hones it in for me. Thank you. Other questions or comments for Jonathan? Wow, that's a quiet one. Someone's okay with Jonathan's plan as presented with the stakeholders' task force and his timeline? Do you have a whole bunch of head nods? Wow, you hit this one out of the park, Jonathan.
Oh, thank you, Council. We'll be back on December thirteenth, and also have a happy Thanksgiving and be safe. And we'll continue to make you proud.
You always do. Thank you. You, too. All right, let me scroll back up. So that gets us to Council Meeting Agenda Review Communications and Roundtable. So does anyone have any questions on the consent agenda tonight? Okay, don't see head, I see head shaky, no. We have no proclamations that I see. We have an announcement. All right. We've got a good amount of time here for Council Communications. So go ahead and start off and order my video here with Counsel Kellogg.
Thank you, Mayor. The only item I have to report is, there was the final Southwest Corridor Steering Committee meeting on Monday. You know, the, I'm sure some of you have read the newspaper articles. There is some glimmer of hope out there that with a Democratic administration and potentially a Democratic Congress, that there might be an infrastructure bill that got pushed through that would provide a considerably larger number of funds for matching and paying for the Southwest Corridor project. Whether that happens or not is anyone's guess, but everyone on the committee was very thankful for the effort from the staff at Trimet as well as all the effort that came in from other electeds, you know, on, on putting together what we thought was a very good plan. One that in my mind would have had some great benefits for Twalton, and I don't want anyone to give up hope. You know, the plan does get put on the shelf, but that doesn't mean that it could be, in the words of Mr. Kelsey, re-Phoenixed. Was interesting. And so just so you know, the comment that I made at the meeting that actually caught me a little bit of flack was that I'm excited, I remain hopeful the project will be built. And then once it is built, I look forward to all the comments of people wondering why it wasn't built earlier. So again, I retain hope that the project will be built, and I want to thank everyone who supported me in my role on that committee and look forward to some progress on that in the future. That's all I have, except happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
All right, thank you. Council Pratt.
Hi, I attended a couple of meetings. One was HBA Home Builders Association Housing Forecast for twenty twenty-one. And a lot of it, I think, has been said before, the, they were talking about, you know, the demand exists. They need land, and they're talking about smaller lots to have the middle and affordable housing. The one thing that was kind of unique right now is that existing homes are now selling at a premium over new construction, which rarely happens. So that was kind of interesting. And the one thing they pointed out that I hadn't really thought about, I thought was interesting for us to consider in the future is that the millennials are now hitting that, they're hitting middle age. But they're also in their, their peak earning years, and at that point where they might be, are looking to buy homes and, and there's this movement to the suburbs, and what they're really looking for in addition to that are amenities. So I thought they were good points for us to consider as we look at our future growth. I went to the community, the conversations on the police use of force, and there were several people there. So I will just say that I thought there were a lot of thoughtful questions, and that Chief Steele did a great job of, with his answers and gave great explanations of how complex these situations can be. And finally, I wanted to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving and remind everybody that this Saturday, I read a proclamation last weekend. It is Small Business Saturday, so if at all possible, please shop locally. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Council Morrison.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, a couple of meetings that I sat in on, besides the use of force and with the Twalton Police Department, and I agree with Counsel Pratt, I thought Chief Steele did an excellent job along with his captain and, and walking everybody through everything. There was a, Tiger Twalton School Board had a presentation to elected officials. I think it was, gosh, last week, sounds, feels like it was two years ago with what's been going on. And they, I was really impressed with how prepared they are and the guidelines that they're setting up so that when the kids are allowed to come back in school, how they'll be able to do that was, they're on top of things, and it just, it gives me, gives me hope. And, and they're also aware of the impact of not having, especially the K through three grades in, on campus, and they're hopeful to work through that. Their guidelines are, I, well, obviously, they're identical to the guidelines. If you saw the news brief that was sent out this evening just before Council started on the governor's guidelines, which was noted in there, and I, I have to strongly reinforce this. It was noted in those guidelines that this is a draft and that it's changing. It is a draft, but it's also what everybody's using. Like I said, the school district is pretty much mirroring that right now. But it is changing, it constantly changes as new information becomes available and what they're trying to do. So everyone needs to kind of be aware of that, 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 that's, that's just something that's gonna, gonna change as we get more information. Finally, the C four Metro Committee Subcommittee met last Thursday morning at seven thirty, Wednesday morning, seven thirty in the morning. It's a great seven thirty AM meeting. It's actually one I really enjoy. We're gonna be missing a lot of institutional knowledge next year, besides the fact that I'm obviously stepping down from that committee. Mayor Knapp is stepping down, as is Mayor Axelrod from Westland, as is Counsel Teresa Coloff from Lake Oswego. So we don't know what's going on in Oregon City. They, Commissioner Smith has been the alternate and has been coming to all the meetings. So anyway, a lot going on. The big focus of discussion was House Bill two thousand and one, that's the middle housing. We've discussed it. Mayor Bubinac sent a letter on to, I don't know, whoever he sent the letter to, Mayor, my mind's blank right now. But we are aligned, our, our four, we had five concerns in our letter that Mayor Bubinac outlined that the Council discussed prior to him sending out that letter. Those are the concerns of literally every other city in the metro area. And so we're, we're certainly not alone, and there's a lot of us who feel that maybe some progress will be made on, on changing some, especially in plan developments, and with respect to public transportation and ma- mass just density, density. And I too wish, to wish everybody a very happy and lonely Thanksgiving Day. We are, our family is, we've told, we, we're actually, and I want to throw this out for some people to think about, because I, I'm not sure who in our family came up with the idea, but we've really embraced it. And that is that we're making a food delivery. My in-laws live, actually, they live at the Marquee Center now. And we're making a food delivery to them, a very safe and food delivery of stuff. My wife's sister who lives in Salem is, is coming up and delivering different portions of the meal, and we're giving them different portions of our meal, which they're taking back. And so we're kind of doing a, we're all kind of touching outdoors with masks, handing over some different meals so that we can see everybody, but then we're all going back inside and eat, watch the football game by our, by ourselves. And as the LLC, and I'm not sure, Mayor, you're, you're more clear on this, you're way more involved, as are you, Counselor Brooks. But we received a letter from the President of the LLC, and I believe it's the national, not the state, where he said it really, really succinctly. For those of you who have not read it, and for those of you who don't get it, he basically said, stay alone this Thanksgiving. You have, you'll have many more Thanksgiving holidays to celebrate, but you only have one grandma. And I just, you know, that just brought tears to my eyes because. And I just, you know, that just brought tears to my eyes because I get sentimental about my mom and from my kids and missing their grandma. So happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Next, Paul. Council Reyes.
Not much on my end, just waiting for all these meetings that I'm supposed to be joining to join those meet, you know, to go back to dating, you know, putting dates on the calendar or something. But no, not going on, just happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I've had many, many, many alone Thanksgivings, so it's not very unusual to me to be alone on a Thanksgiving night or with me and my partner or somebody else, you know. So my family are fine and they, I don't know, they, they have a bunch of kids, so they probably are fine. So, but thank you, everyone, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Council Brooks.
Well, good evening, everybody. I, I'm sorry, I just have to wait one second and let my dog back in. I'm sorry about this.
All right, well, shoot over to Council President Grimes then.
Thank you. Well, yes, of course, I want to wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving. And I also want to remind everybody that there are local restaurants that are open in the Twalton and greater Twalton area. And many of them would be so happy to make a special takeout for your Thanksgiving meal. So either Wednesday night, after you've been cooking pies all day and you're exhausted and you'd like takeout, or maybe Friday while you're watching football and you're still tired from eating too much turkey Thursday. There's lots of local restaurants and lots of local areas that are open that would love to do something beautiful for your takeout. And you would be being safe and you wouldn't have to go to the grocery store and, you know, mix around the public too much, but you'd be supporting local businesses by buying a Thanksgiving meal or a pre or post Thanksgiving meal. So I just wanted to throw that out there for anybody that, that might be applicable. And safe and happy Thanksgiving. That's all.
Thanks, Nancy. Back to you, Bridget.
Thanks for switching it around. Sorry about that. I had a busy week or two weeks since we saw each other last. First, I wanted to, I'm sorry, again, say thank you to all the veterans for your service. I've been enjoying driving around our city, seeing the veteran signs and, you know, understanding which of my neighbors have served. And I don't know how long we're keeping them out for, but I love seeing them out, so I hope we keep them out as long as we can. On Thursday, I attended the twelfth and the nineteenth, I attended the LIP meetings. I'm gonna go back to that. And, you know, that was also the day that I went and packed up my mom and stepdad's house. And, and then the following week, I went to the N L C Summit. I attended a lot of meetings and I'm still assimilating the information from going. But one of the meetings I attended was the Western Municipal Association, so our district, which is also where some COVID cases were from when we were there in, in, in the spring. And everyone was healthy and so it was good to be part of our team. And I also attended the Diversity Equity Northwest Employees Roundtable, which was a good conversation with people that are really invested in making progress around our whole region, around diversity, equity and inclusion. I also Tuesday, the seventeenth, attended the Twalton Arts Advisory Committee. And that was a very interesting meeting. There'll be an entire, I think, presentation. But I just want to really thank Ross Hoover, Julie Ludeman and the whole Arts Committee for their leadership. There was a psyche grant available to our region for arts to help with uplifting the spirit of people, especially right now during the COVID pandemic. And how the National League of Cities put it was, you know, that we're in a triple pandemic with COVID racism and economic downturn. So that was kind of a nice summary. So the psyche grant, there's programs. I encourage people to check them out on our website. There'll be information. But there's some really great ways that we're doing creative, safe ways of connecting over the holidays through arts. And also there's a mural project that is going to be coming up as well. And the artists and people on the Arts Committee help do some selection processes into a final selection phase. We're not through it yet, but we've started to make some moves towards making decisions. So that's super exciting as well. And there was also a guest, and I apologize for not remembering her name, but she was talking about Twalton Valley Creates. And there's an incubator process for anyone that's interested in arts, and there's some money there. And there's an application. It's a very short turnaround. So if you're interested, please go to the Twalton Valley Creates website and check it out and take a look at the program. She ended up visiting with us in Staines for the whole meeting and it was really nice to have her there. And I wish I had my, my notes right in front of me, but I took too many notes last week. Let's see. I too went to the community listening session and always have been impressed with Chief Steele, our mayor, Anne Mugg and George, who all did a really great job capturing questions, answering them on the fly and being really well organized in thoughts. And the community that took their time in the evening to come out, that are concerned about these things, that have learned more, that have more questions, people have reached out to me that were attending that and were really happy about it and also are very concerned about these issues. So I'm really grateful that we're doing, taking this on as a city. The Friday, the N L C wrapped up and, and then they had their business meeting. And since I was only attending from Twalton, I had the opportunity of being a voting delegate and learning about all the new leadership for the National League of Cities and was really proud to represent Twalton and glad that we were at the table to support the new slate coming in. And then I will say, I also just want to say, I've been focusing this week as far as this week being, being, you know, being this strange week of this third surge. This, you know, third wave in this, you know, unprecedented amount of people being diagnosed and hospitalized, not just in our area, but around the entire country, hitting these markers, like two hundred and fifty thousand people who have passed away and making decisions that we just don't normally make, having to change patterns, and it's really hard. So I just encourage everyone to be safe this holiday as well. And the, the Oregon Health Authority, I wrote this quote down, "This Thanksgiving, cancel any plans. You have to celebrate indoors with large groups of family and friends. The safest, wisest and most caring way to protect the people you love is to keep your Thanksgiving dinner small and limited to no, no more than one other household besides your own. Keep the holidays a time to remember, not a time to regret." And I just want to remind people that what we do, even it spreads beyond our family in situations like with my stepfather, where he was in for a very unrelated thing to the hospital. If there's less people in the hospital, people that are not on the COVID floor have a less chance of catching COVID as well, that are very vulnerable people being there. So these are, this might not touch everybody's life personally, but these are real stories. Every life is an individual life, so I'm just thinking, I'm focusing on lighting a candle, counting my blessings and sitting in gratitude rather than focusing on a feast, which the Greek girl in me always wants to cook a feast. So, thank you.
Thanks, Bridget. All right. Ten, a few meetings as usual. The Metro Mayor's Consortium created and agreed upon a legislative agenda back on eleven twelve for the next session, the Oregon Legislature. I'll be sending out that agenda, the legislative agenda to you probably tonight or tomorrow. Following that, Greater Portland Inc. presented our plan for a regional economic recovery. Of course, that's gonna be quite the lift with Portland in the name, Greater Portland Inc. Because a lot of the feedback they're getting from companies that are interested in the area, they all want to know about the riots in Portland. So it's gonna take quite a while for G P I to move beyond that and start tracking businesses into town and assist businesses that are in the metro area to grow. The Washington County Corning meeting, several items on the agenda that night, but the important couple ones that there that I spoke up about was that ODOT is looking for congestion relief planning. And ninety nine W wasn't part of their congestion relief planning effort. It fell off because it was considered part of the metro effort transportation measure. Since the measure failed, I asked that ODOT put it back on the plan because ninety nine W is fairly congested, as we all know. And the five cities that join it, we'd really like to see that back on ODOT's work plan. We also talked about, there's a stiff and how ODOT's gonna spend the money in the future on some of their projects. And one of the questions I asked was, I didn't see a bucket put aside for where they want to take state highways and transfer control over to local jurisdictions. There was no pot of money, if you will, for that project at all in the next several years. But the answer back from ODOT was that it was encapsulated in some of the other programs. But they do know about it. They, it's on their mind. Because one of the questions I brought up when they first presented this transfer of ownership is how they're gonna pay for it. And at that point, they had no answer. It seems like they still do not. As we all know, ODOT's financial picture isn't the greatest in the next couple of years because of decrease in gas taxes. I too attended the Northwest Public Employees Diversity Conference. I attended a very enlightening presentation by Rhodes Perry. And the title of it was "Serving as an Inclusive Leader in the Era of Black Lives Matter." And it was really good presentation. He sent some documentation out that I'll focus, that will focus. That will send out to all of you, some good slides, good information on how to convene as an inclusive leader, you know, with the Black Lives Matter movement and how to hear everyone. As was mentioned before, the mayor's, the conversation, community conversation on policing and police use of force went very well. Make sure to mark your calendars for December ninth at six P M. From six to seven, we're gonna have the community conversation. This is the final conversation, if you will, the three-part series on how the community feels about the use of force policies here in Twalton and about the force itself, about the police department itself. I look forward to that discussion. And then on, with the twentieth, I testified along with Susan Noack at the H B two thousand and seventeen Transit Advisory Committee. We were advocating for increased funding rather than just flat funding of three one, three point one million. We want some more money for regional coordination. And what that means is our shuttle program. So that encompasses our shuttle, the GroveLink Shuttle and the North Hillsborough Shuttle. Myself and Susan Noack, as I said, testified, it didn't go anywhere. The committee decided to leave the funding at three point one million. But I want to thank Commissioner Rogers of Washington County and Commissioner Savis of Clackamas County, because they re-irritated the need in a future fiscal cycle to increase that funding. Of course, Washington County Shuttle here for the blue and red shuttle. And for our new shuttle, hopefully that will take off here with the next year or so, down Borland Road, the Clackamas County Shuttle. And finally, I gotta dig into this some more. I saw some emails late last week that Chair Bernard of Clackamas County has convinced the governor to decouple the three counties. I haven't heard any details yet, but I will follow up on that because that'd be pretty significant that the three counties are no longer grouped together as a region when it comes to COVID. And mainly thinking that it impacts T T S D because it changes our numbers a little bit as far as rates of COVID. We won't be grouped together anymore. I've heard in the past that the struggle T T S D would have is as the county-state group together, it'd be a very difficult metric to hit with the COVID cases. But now if Washington County truly is segregated from the other two counties, again, we have T T S D operates a little bit in Clackamas County. We've got some overlaps. But long story short, I gotta follow up more on that. It was just a late breaking story on Friday that I saw. With that, we have a lot of three minutes left, so I'll go, I'll go ahead and close this work session. And we'll start off our regular city council meeting at seven o'clock.